Good evening all. I'd like to call the meeting to order of the Whittier Regional Vocational and Tenth School High School. On Wednesday, December 13th, a regular scheduled meeting. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please all rise and join.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America. And to reiterate what we just said, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. The first order of business is public comment. Are there any individuals who would like to speak before the board or anything, except that's what's in the agenda? Okay. Next is, uh, excuse me. We're gonna have, a chorus is gonna entertain us tonight, and I'd like to make a change in the order of business, that right after the chorus, we will go immediately into executive And then after that, we'll come back into a regular session, and then we'll go down and take a look at the float. So I need a motion to change the order of business.
So moved.
Second.
Second. In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed. Mr. Tucker. Unanimous. Uh, not unanimous. One opposed.
Unanimous minus one.
Minus one. Alright. So now I'd like to introduce the chorus.
Well, uh, we're gonna be playing, singing just a couple songs tonight. There's reflections from our concert. We're singing tomorrow night, um, in the auditorium for concert. And, um, a full, full program, uh, some, uh, holiday music and some other songs. And then we're also singing tomorrow at the Acevery, uh, in Aceville family for this year. Field trip tomorrow and concert tomorrow.
Uh. Excuse me, before you get started, could you just state your name and everything?
I'm Linda Erb, and, um, music teacher and world record.
Great.
Say goodbye to November. She, very good. One more time. Two, three. Say goodbye to November. She must be on her way. The cold winds of December look like they're here to stay. Me, I'll just count the snowflakes as they start to fall. Getting lost in the beauty, the magic of it all. And our eyes filled with wonder as the reindeer take to flight. Christmas Eve bells will ring through the town we gather to sing. Christmas Eve has begun. Peace and love to everyone. By the festive candles, they'll chase shadows away. With good friends and our families, share love and joy on this day. Winter winds will whisper through the shivering pines. Near the stars look brighter than on this glorious night. And our eyes filled with wonder as the reindeer take to flight. Christmas Eve bells will ring through the town we gather to sing. Christmas Eve has begun. Peace and love to everyone. Christmas Eve bells will ring through the town we gather to sing. Christmas Eve has begun. Peace and love to everyone. Christmas Eve. Christmas Eve. Christmas Eve. It's a Marshmallow World in the winter when the snow starts to cover the ground. It's a time for play. It's a whipped cream day. And we for it the whole year round. Those are marshmallow clouds being friendly. Certainly glow in the arms of the evergreen trees. And the sun is red like a pumpkin head. It's shining so your nose won't freeze. The world is your snowball. See how it grows. That's how it goes whenever it snows. The world is your snowball just for a song. Get up and roll it along. It's a yummy, yummy world in the winter. Take a walk with your favorite girl. It's a sugar day. What if spring is late? In winter, it's a Marshmallow World. The world is your snowball. See how it grows. That's how it goes whenever it snows. The world is your snowball just for a song. Get up and roll it along. It's a yummy, yummy world made for sweethearts and you. Take a walk with your favorite girl. It's a sugar day. What if spring is late? In winter, it's a Marshmallow World. In winter, it's a Marshmallow World. In winter, it's a Marshmallow. It's a Marshmallow World in the winter. It's a Marshmallow World in the winter.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
That was wonderful.
Ready? Ready? One, two, three.
We'll see you tomorrow night.
Come to the concert tomorrow night. Oh, Amesbury, we sing at 11. Add the whole family.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Merry Christmas.
Senior lunch, I'm going. I think that was great.
Awesome.
It just, just proves to me that, you know, between the academics and the vocational here, the arts are just as important. Sometimes we seem to forget, you know, that we have arts. And it's, it's an outlet for a lot of students that, you know. I really appreciate that. Okay. Moving on, excuse me. I like, I need a motion to enter an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the teachers' union.
So moved.
As an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school committee, and upon completion of the executive session, we will return to the open meeting and resume the open meeting. The rest, motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Murphy. It's a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wood. Mr. Wood, is there a roll call vote?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes.
Irving?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. I just wanna thank everybody for going down and seeing the float. I think it was, every year, the floats are always at the top of the line. So now we're going to have approval of the minutes November 8th.
So moved.
Mr. Chairman. I will second. Are there any questions, deletions, or omissions on the minutes? Hearing none, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Treasury report, Mr. Lusay.
Second.
Second. Any, none being heard, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. There is no old business posted. Reports and communications. Ms. Jackson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, and all other school committee members. The girls' basketball team has just started their season. The team is working hard at practice. They continue recruiting additional players to help strengthen the team. They've already participated in a few scrimmages and have been working hard in preparation for this season. The team just opened up their season with their first game on the 12th against Ipswich. Boys' basketball has been, um, working hard in practice and is looking forward to the start of their season next week. They have a well-rounded roster of 16 student athletes. Many of the players are primed to have outstanding individual seasons and to work together as a team to build upon last year's team, last year's team success. The wrestling team is off to a great start with 40 kids coming up for this year's squad. All of them are working very hard and they're optimistic for another great season. They kicked things off this past Saturday with a quad meet at North Reading High School and performed well, going three to zero on the day. It was a great start to the season. There's still a lot of work to be improved on, but the coach likes what he sees. The hockey team, which co-ops with Amesbury High School, has reported a great improvement since the seas, since, since the season has started. This season has brought more players participating, which is helping the varsity and junior varsity programs. A new coach has been hired and the players are excited as preseason has been very positive. The team opened their season last night with a game against Musquinamet. Student government has been busy working with class officers to develop some fundraising ideas and to begin planning the events for February and March. In addition, the advisors have developed a freshman student council and will have two representatives from each freshman homeroom. The goal is to promote involvement and leadership development while continuing the Whittier, while contributing to the Whittier campus and our school community through school-sponsored events. The multicultural club has had a presentation, um, by one of their students about Mexico, where many of our students are from. They got to hear about the culture, customs, and language of this country with 31 states. They're currently creating and piloting a project to propose to our Whittier community that will help us get to know one another better. Whittier's chorus, um, has been steadily preparing for their upcoming performances. Their, their performances include singing for the MVSA luncheon on December 12th, singing for the school committee today, singing for the Amesbury Council on Aging Christmas Party on December 14th, and their annual holiday concert at seven on the 14th. The concert is open to the public and free, and they hope for a good turnout. Santa will be there. Final callbacks for the Spring Musical are completed and the cast will be posted before the holiday break. A large group auditioned and they're looking forward to exciting year in Drama Club. Uh, the key clubs had a few community service events in the past month, such as the Haverhill Santa Parade, the Merrimack Santa Parade, and the Merrimack Santa Parade. Also, they had their first event helping out at the Sea Festival of Trees in Salisbury, which went very well. Closing up November, um, they attended the Breakfast with Santa in Salisbury, which was held by the Salisbury Fire Department.
One question. What's the musical?
Um, We Will Rock You? Oh, it's, I think that's it.
Last week, last meeting.
We Will Rock You, we think? We Will Rock You?
Oh, really?
Seven o'clock.
No, that's the, that's the winter concert.
Oh, okay. Well, anyway, keep us posted when that comes up, okay?
Well, it's the winter concert.
Yeah, not the musical.
Oh. Isn't the musical, um, like, this is February?
It's in, like, March.
March?
Okay, alright, just, just make sure we know, okay? Thanks.
Okay.
Uh, yeah. Like, I know it's in an M.
You're right. I thought it was kinda funny it was no check. Philo. Great job too at the Festival of the Trees in Salisbury. Great take. Great take.
Yeah, there, we had this, a lot of, like, adults come and help us too, that we were able to have. And it was fun too.
And two trees.
Yeah.
Two trees.
Yeah. My advisors were trying to win the archery, the key club tree, 'cause we had our own.
Oh, the key club had their own?
Yeah, we made our own tree and then volunteered also. So, yeah.
Well, great. And you have a good Christmas. Next on the agenda, excuse me, is the superintendent's report. Ms. Lynch.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. For informational purposes, I have hires for a math tutor, a vocational tutor, also for our winter coaches. Um, a budget update. We are meeting, um, Ms. Cosmas, the business manager, the principal, and myself are meeting with the department heads and to finalize department submissions to the bill, the FY19 budget, if you can believe it already, on December 21st. And CAS, MCAS update in November, juniors were tested in ELA in math on MCAS retest. The results should be available in January. In Janu, January, Whittier will offer a free after-school program for 11 juniors that need to pass the Biology MCAS retest, which will begin February 5th and 6th. Whittier signed up to do a question trial with about, um, 79th grade students for a new biology test, so we can prepare for the MCAS 2.0, the next generation. This test will be given electronically. Uh, on Thursday, November 9th, I attended the superintendent mentor meeting at Wakefield Middle School. At these small group meetings, we discussed problems of practice within the superintendency. On Tuesday, November 14th, I attended the Merrimack Valley Superintendent's Association meeting. Attorney Mike Long, who works with, uh, Attorney Di Pietro, discussed ongoing cases involving school districts and issues that affect schools. On Tuesday, November 14th, I attended the YW, YMCA Educator of the Year Dinner at DeBorrow's. I wanna thank Mr. James for attending as well. I wanna congratulate Joe Boland, our freshman guidance counselor, and Paul Moskovich, our machine technology instructor, for their nominations. On Thursday, December 7th, I attended the superintendent mentor meeting in Marlboro. Um, the induction program continues to focus on developing school strategy within our district. I have one more meeting, um, in Marlboro, and I will have completed the three years of the induction program. On Friday, December 8th, I attended the Massachusetts Association of Vocational Administrators Officers Meeting, uh, in Bourne down the Cape. The officers continue to focus on advocacy for vocational education in the state of Massachusetts. On Tuesday, December 12th, I, uh, Whittier hosted the Merrimack Valley Superintendent's Association Meeting with Administrative Assistance. We had over 100 people in this dining room, um, and I'll have to say, it was amazing. I've, I've received more, a lot of phone calls from other superintendents about the food, and it was one of the best ever, and thank you so much. And I really wanna thank the culinary staff. They really went above and beyond, and it was an amazing event, and, um, it really is a showcase for, for Whittier students, um, and our staff. Tomorrow, I'll be heading to Southeastern Vocational School, um, where the government will be making an announcement on post-secondary programs, um, and at many of the regional vocational schools, and Whittier Tech is one of them. So we're putting the fast track, um, to developing a post-secondary program here at Whittier, um, starting next year. And also, I hope by the next meeting, I'll be able to have an announcement about, um, a grant and a dental assisting program that we're, we're looking forward to hopefully implementing for next year. So hopefully I'll have some good news, um, at the January meeting. And that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you. Any questions for the superintendent?
Wait, I need, I just have a couple more things, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, acceptance of donations. Um, I requestfully request the school committee's approval for the acceptance of donations listed on the attachment memorandum dated November 29th from the business manager.
Move to accept. Uh, Mr. Tucker, second. Mr. Irving, any questions on these donations? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous.
Um, as far as, um, some of the, the work that our vocational programs are doing, um, in culinary, they donated a gingerbread village to the Tattersall Farm at the City of Haverhill Open House Christmas Gingerbread Contest. In culinary, um, for the foster kids of the Merrimack Valley, there was a donation of cookies for their annual Christmas party. Culinary and health occupations will be assisting with opportunity works in the Haverhill Holiday Party on December 13th. Performing Arts Amesbury Council on Aging Holiday Luncheon will be tomorrow, and we saw a sneak preview of our students, um, tomorrow at the Council of Aging. Um, ongoing in Haverhill, um, Carpentry's working on a display case for the town of Amesbury for their 350th anniversary. And in Merrimack, um, we constructed two park benches for the new playground, and we're just waiting to deliver those, um, to the town of Merrimack.
Are they the ones that, that are on the float?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Similar?
Yeah, similar. And that is all I have for you.
Great. Any questions or comments? None being heard. Excuse me. Next on the agenda for tonight is the principal's update. Mr. McGowan.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, rest of the school committee members. Uh, the fall sports are complete, and I just wanted to congratulate the parents, coaches, uh, and everyone involved, the students obviously, for another successful sports season. Uh, following that, we had the Boosters, uh, held a successful fall sports banquet on Thursday, December 7th. Uh, it was very positive, over 300 parents, uh, and student athletes attended the banquet. The Boosters are also set up, uh, for another fundraiser, mattress fundraiser, uh, which will be held on, in the school cafeteria on January 27th, uh, from 10 to 4:00. And again, hopefully be a nice, successful, uh, fundraiser for the Boosters. The eighth grade tours still continue and should be completed by the holiday break. Uh, this continues to be a wonderful opportunity for potential students, uh, set, uh, to see Whittier and what Whittier is all about, and to learn what Whittier is all about. The Holiday Fund, uh, is off and running, and this fund, again, hopefully will alleviate some of the burdens of our students and families. Uh, I just wanna thank all who have donated so far, and special thanks goes out to Cheryl Began, our security manager, as well as the guidance department, Elaine Kevikis, uh, who are continuing this process to date.
If someone wants to donate to that, how do they go about that?
So you can go, uh, online, whittiertech.org, and the foundation fund, and under that, there's the Holiday Fund. You can also go up to the business office and, and donate as well. So easier online. That's all I have.
That's it?
Yeah. Merry Christmas, happy holidays. How's that?
Good.
Great to see everyone.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
I just have one question.
Yes.
Um, are all the students, I mean, are all the schools participating now in the tours?
Yes, uh, we, most of them are, yeah. I believe, I, I'm not sure the exact, uh, if there are a couple of schools that haven't, but so far to date, um, I know we had hunking the other day, uh, from Haverhill, but, um, I'm not sure the entire, if all the schools from the surrounding towns are, um, but right now, the ones that have come have been very successful.
Okay, great.
So.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you again.
Next on the agenda for tonight is the business manager, Ms. Cosmas.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, members of the committee. Just briefly, I wanted to give you some good news from our first robotics team. Um, I'm sure that all of you who have been here and have come to Open House and other events know that they're very active, but one of the things that I was recently informed about is, as part of their activities, the team actively pursues grants to help them off, offset the cost of competitions, and they've been very, very successful. To date this year, they have secured and received a total of $6,750.
Wow.
$5,000 from Schneider Electric, $1,000 from Raytheon, and $750 from BAE Systems. Also, the interesting piece is, as part of the grant, the team is required to document how they conduct business throughout the year and provide details of what the team does to encourage STEM activities and fields for the children. They will also take the responsibility on of drafting the thank you letters, and they will acknowledge all their corporate sponsorships on their team shirts, on their robot, and on the official name that is read at the competitions. Uh, I wanna thank Mr. Sporopoulos, Mr. Beat, and Mr. T-Ball, because they work really hard with these kids. You can always see them in the building, and, uh, when he sent me this, this email this week about the amount of, and these are just private grants, they're not grants that we go for, they're not things that they fundraise for, but this is part of what this, this, um, this team does as part of their student activity, so I thought it was interesting to share it all with you.
Terrific.
Um, any questions about that? I think it's great. Anyway, that's.
Just praise.
Yeah, isn't it wonderful?
Yeah.
That's all I have for you this evening. I wanted to wish you happy holidays and a very wonderful new year.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, moving right along, is the chair's report. We have a, kind of a full meeting next January of the new year. We're gonna have some policy updates. We're having some first readings tonight. We'll have the choir league variance analysis. We'll have that first look at the budget review, and we'll have the superintendent's update on, uh, her goals for the next meeting. And the subcommittees, uh, and the executive. The executive committee will be meeting, uh, in January to discuss some initial stuff on the budget, some other issues. Should we schedule it before the meeting? Should we set that meeting today? Yeah.
Do you have a date?
Yeah. Prior to the meeting in, in January? Want to be prior to the meeting or a separate night?
Prior to the meeting in January.
Prior to the meeting. What do we need, 5:00? 5:30? 5:30.
I don't have that thing with me. So you're doing it before?
Before the meeting. Five o'clock? Is that too early for anybody?
Not too early.
Executive Board is all the chair of the committees and any members that would like to attend. It's an open meeting for anybody. Five o'clock?
That sounds really good.
Is that too early? A little early, yeah. 5:30? For the executive meeting? Executive Board, yeah.
Give you guys a bunch of quality time to spend together.
Well, it's, it's a, it's a first run-through from the administrative. Five o'clock. Can you make it? Well, yeah, I can make it. Just make for a long night, that's all. Well, you can take a nap. You know about life. Five o'clock, right here. Executive Board members.
That's in January.
In January. Before the next scheduled meeting.
There is.
Right.
Okay. Instructional personnel, Dr. Testaverde.
We have nothing to report, thank you.
Thank you. Plant operations, Mr. Tucker.
Uh, we have some minutes here. I move to accept, uh, plant operations meeting of November 8th.
Is everybody's packet?
Yeah. And I don't see any need to meet unless you have one. So we're all set on plant.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Sorry, negotiations. Uh, Mr. Early's not here.
Uh, we did meet, uh, November 15th and motion to approve the minutes.
So moved. Uh, second, I mean.
And we do have a meeting coming up on January 3rd.
Right.
At 3:00.
3:00 in your office.
Good. Alrighty. We, we don't, we don't have to accept those minutes, right? We do? We need a motion to accept the minutes.
Move to accept. Second.
Second. Mr. Wood. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Policy, Mr. Irving.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have minutes from November 8th, so move those for acceptance.
Second.
Any questions on the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous.
And we have for first reading, um, they're, they're on your agenda, but I believe we really need to read them, right? Correct? Alright, so the following for the first reading on the policy. We'll be looking at DB, DBC, DBD, DBJ, DJ, DGA, DK, DKC, EB, EBB, EC, ECA, EDC, EE, EA, EFC, FF, FFA, FFAA, GBA, GBEB, GBED, GBGB, GBGE, GBGF, GBI, GBK, GCBA, GCBB, GCE, and the residency policy. Move that for the first reading.
Second.
I have a question. I can't find the.
Help me.
I can't find which one it was, but I remember reading.
Do your homework.
I know, well, there's 400.
I know.
That's a slight exaggeration.
Explanation. It talked about administration and staff members being reimbursed for approved travel. On the mileage. But it also stated that the school committee has to vote to set the rate. So, I don't know if we should take a look at that. So I don't know if we should take a look at that.
I would assume the rate of the school, Carr could help us with that, but I believe it's 54 cents a mile, and that would be it.
Yeah, but I don't remember ever approving that.
The IRS determines.
The IRS determines mileage.
Yeah, but we have to approve it, it said in the... I'll find it, send it to you.
All right, it's part of that, though, so I mean, we can debate it the next time too.
I don't remember ever voting on it.
Yeah.
How's that?
Anyway, I move that for the first reading.
Okay, second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, also, just to let you know, as we mentioned before, MESC sent us 99 policies, and thanks to the superintendent and Lisa, our administrative assistant, unbelievable work. We've been able to get through all of them. So as of tonight, we've gone through them all. We'll be presenting the next set of about 30 at the next session. And I would ask you, when you receive your packet, to read over them, because most of these last 30 are not very controversial, and pretty, a lot of it's just language change, you know, went from dogs to service animals, things like that. So I would like to possibly present it next month for a first reading and suspend the rules for a second reading. And so we're in place by the first of the year with all of our policies up to date. So just, if you have any questions, I'm not trying to fast it for any reason, but if you have any questions, bring them to the meeting next month, and we'll try to go through them. And I believe we, if we can just have like a 15-minute meeting prior to the meeting, I know we have executive, but if we could do a policy at 6:45, just to get our eggs together to know what we're doing.
Yep.
All right?
All right.
So 6:45 on the 10th?
Yes. Everybody's in compliance with that?
Yep.
Okay, moving on to the meeting dates. Next regular scheduled meeting is the January 10th, 2018, 7:00 p.m. It's an important meeting for two reasons. The first reason is that our treasurer, Amy, how you pronounce that? Pasek? Pasek will be here to just give a general overview and answer questions on the treasurer's report. There's a lot of monies in there, different counts, and she's going to go, what each one is set up for, how money is transferred from there to the payroll, things of that nature. So I think it'll be very informational, yes.
I have a question. Did you say that it'll be during the meeting?
Yeah.
As a part of our meeting? Yes.
Yes. And the second reason is, it's Ellen Zima birthday. You going to bring presents? I am, for myself. Any new business that you want to be discussed in the next future meetings? Move to adjourn. Move to adjourn by Mr. Irving. Second.
Second.
Mr. Lusage, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and I'll have a safe and happy Christmas.